It's six o'clock Wednesday, September seventh is the budget workshop. And we have an agenda, so we'll do a quick call to order.
On Mary Island.
Yeah.
Right, of course, sorry. Counselor Burgner.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Oh, my goodness. So before we step into the actual budget workshop open discussion, this will be a closed session that we're going to talk just briefly about individual personnel employees that are on staff right now. So I will ask our audience member.
Yes.
And Renee to pause and exit and we'll come get you. Thank you, sir. And you're. Okay, so then that last sheet that you have standalone kind of talks about the overall personnel costs are just the salary pieces. You'll remember from last workshop, we talked about all those other categories, but not personnel costs, not the salaries. So that's what's on tap for tonight. As well as then just all those categories that are listed on number three and four in discussion. So before we get to the, the actual budget categories, then this is the details for how the calculations were made on salaries that will be going shifting into the big. So we have, and again, I've numbered the lines for ease and referencing. We start with the mayor and council. And you have heard your city code. The mayor has paid fifteen hundred dollars. Councillors are paid twelve hundred dollars per month. And then for budgetary purposes, I took the thirty five dollars per meeting that you're paying and use the maximum of seventy meetings to do that calculation. So the entire amount then gets carried over to at eighteen thousand five fifty. And you'll see that carries over then to budget line six. And then related payroll taxes are based on payroll. So that's at point oh seven six five. Then lines six, seven, eight, nine, ten. That's what I'm proposing for planning and zoning. You know, we've talked about the importance of that committee. And quite honestly, I think, you know, they, they perhaps know your city code better than, and that's no disrespect to this group, but that is their job. That's what their task.
Can I go back just a minute?
Sure.
To the salaries. Like us to talk about this. We have a chance to bring Sonny on permanently for three days a week. Well, I don't, is it three days? I, I got to calculate. So Sonny.
Do you want to talk about that?
Are you talking about this?
Well.
Are you talking, are you jumping down to Kirk or USC of the council salaries?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were on our salary, our, the staff salary. Okay.
You want to talk about staff salaries?
Let's get through this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me just finish up with the. Yeah, because we'll, we'll talk about that. But, um, sorry, um, so line six, seven, eight, nine, this is what I'm proposing for the planning and zoning people.
Are you on the last page? Okay, I'm looking at page one trying to go.
We haven't left the last page.
Okay, yeah, I was kind of put back to the first one again going, what?
We're still on the short page. I'm easing you into the.
I apologize. I gave you guys things to something.
Well, yeah, and now I'm really excited and I don't know what to do about it.
So, so what I'm proposing is that the chair received fifty dollars per meeting and the other commissioners thirty five dollars per meeting. And you'll see off to the right councillor slash commissioners. Those two, Jim and Jim, are already receiving pay for planning and zoning. As part of their councillor thing. So in, in my mind, it, it's fair to kind of carry that over to the others on that committee. And then I know that the chair does an exceptional job learning those meetings and stuff. So I'm guessing that, and I projected eighteen meetings just because this is preliminary budget, right? And so it's, it's based on one meeting a month. And then additional six meetings if they had to have special meetings or such.
Well, I like the idea. My question is, what are, I thought, is it possible our chair is going to be changing? Because there was, hasn't been change in a while. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Terms.
What?
Terms of members.
And so I.
Only because your, your, people on your planning and zoning commission had no idea they were turning.
Right.
And now there are.
I'm just worried that the person, the chair that's been doing so much work this whole time is not going to receive the benefit of the, if they have to switch out of that role.
I'm trying to provide an incentive.
Okay.
Or another term if, because really, and, and there again, you, you kind of want, and that's why we set up this rolling schedule, right? So we have some continuity in terms of understanding that all. Because these two, their positions could change as well, right? Because that's kind of independent from the actual makeup of the commission. But I do want continuity there. I do want that leadership there. And I think he's the chair, current chair. I think, I'm, I'm hoping he will.
He said that he wanted to stay on, so, so we, we've got that. And he's got so much knowledge. I mean, he is phenomenal in what he does, you know? And, and, and he's the anchor, you know?
That's why I worry. So I like that all.
And then providing an opportunity for mentorship too.
Right, but it's.
Because that's.
He's great, yeah, so.
That used to be the old, you can't give up your position until you recruit.
Train your, train to replace it.
Yeah.
So the other question I had is we did talk about having only one of us at each, so that's more standard. I don't know if that'll happen, but either way, we would still need just one more member that would get thirty five dollars, so that would make sense.
But it's offset then, right? Because you wouldn't perhaps have a council member at that meeting.
Yeah, it would all equal out. My other thought, did you say that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that you would be the secretary from now on?
I love planning and zoning, so I certainly am interested in doing that. I know that we're, I, I'm trying to get Renee to determine what track she kind of wants to go on. If it's, if it's going to be more financial, if it's going to be more clerk, more planning and zoning. So I'm not, I'm not determining what track she should take or anything she needs to figure that out for herself. But to the extent that I can let her explore some opportunities, we're going to do that.
Okay.
But yes, initially, at least probably since the end of the year.
I mean, Sonny's got so much knowledge in this, okay? And, and to me, this is a critical growth of what we're going to have is in the city is what, what's taking place in there to.
Well, that's why I would like to have, you know, instead of having a secretary as part of the, as part of the board to have her.
No, and, and I mean, she's got so much to bring in there to the meetings. I mean, she's fantastic, so.
And that's where, I don't know who, who the secretary is now, but.
They just elected Colleen.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, she's wonderful. So, but anyway, she's, those are just my thoughts with looking at this.
Well, and along that, I'm sorry, along with that, it, this will take a, a code amendment to be able to do this. And your code, as you know, right now does require two members from council. So if, if that's something that you want to amend as well as the pay piece, it's cheaper to do at once than it.
But I don't think that tonight's the night to do that, you know? So I think it needs to be.
Questions.
No, and those are good questions.
My other, one last question, final question. So what is this, how will this land on water and sewer and that group that's been doing so much work and all the other, you know?
In terms of.
That the planning and zoning is going to be compensated as a committee. But then we still have water and sewer. Oh, we will, okay.
Yeah, that's part of the bigger picture.
Okay, all right. Okay, got it. And then, good, good, thumbs up.
So from the budget question, we're talking about this possibility of going to one council person per committee. So to keep an odd number, we'd have to bring on another commissioner. So for another six hundred and thirty dollars, the risk of adding a third, we're adding a a third member or commissioner, we could do that now in the budget process just to make sure we cover that in case we decide to do that in, at our January annual meeting. If we're going to go back to one, change if we decide to change the code to one council person. Again, we still need seven people, then we need to bring in a sixth person on to keep the one council on. So we have an odd number for votes. We don't want to tie votes.
I don't really know how it's been lately. But, you know, the two commissioners used to show up and to get a quorum, you know, a lot of times we would never had a quorum. So then some people were, were a public here and we're going to have them and, you know. I mean, I guess your commissioners are more get to attend the meeting.
Well, I'll just say with what, what's going on, the attitude that I see at, at the meetings from now on is more of a direction of, of a professional group that's, it's really grabbing a hold. And I think in the past it was, you know, working to try to get the people. And then we were short two people because two people had left that there was in the middle of it. So you didn't have enough, so we kind of got caught in that. But I, I see that, that committee as being the key that there is for the growth of the city. And then I think the people that are on it right now that we put in there are really interested on, on working with what's going on and I think are, are good additions. So I, I think it's more than what it used to be, okay? Instead of just kind of a, here's another, yeah, yeah. It's not an unchillant with, I mean, this is just the attitude of a start point of what we've got. I mean, that's more than what we had for anybody looking at in the past of, of where we're going. So, I mean, that's what I see, you know?
Right, and I, and I think, so it was in part, you know, people not showing up, not having that level of commitment. So finding a quorum was going to be difficult. We had that earlier this year. I, I'm not opposed to having that. I just, you know, that's a council decision how you want to to determine who's going to be on here and, and we can have that discussion.
Yeah, that's a later discussion. Are you using a councillor and an alternative councillor? That's another approach. Make sure we are represented at each of the committees.
Right.
I mean, to put in an extra six hundred and thirty dollars like you're recommending, Ryland, you know, especially on this preliminary. It makes sense too to at least cover it, you know? Let's put it in and then it's covered, so.
And then we get into the actual staff people. And when I talked with, with Kane, a little bit about budgeting, he would like a fourth seasonal person. So that's what line thirteen is, is an additional person. And that's at the sixteen dollars an hour that everybody else kind of started at. Then Fisher, Gavin, John is, is projected on line sixteen as working twenty six weeks. So that kind of gives Kane some opportunity after the kids have gone back into school and such. Bring him on up perhaps a little ahead, even a little bit longer to the fall. And actually has asked that, that John be allowed to, or that Kane be allowed to have John stay on yet this year for some additional time with one of the other employees being out. And again, this is a workshop. We don't make any decisions, but I just want you to, to know that that.
Whether it's health or insurance or self combat. You know, three, four years ago, we couldn't keep Don so many hours or so many weeks or he got into benefits and stuff. I don't.
It doesn't, it doesn't apply to your seasonal when they're limited in their number of hours per.
So we got you, Sonny, and not other people.
Just that category.
Right.
Not limited hours.
My question is, has, has Kane mentioned what this extra person will be doing? Because I don't want to add somebody just to add somebody.
And, and, and I could see later on, once the, the water and sewer might be in and complete, that maybe, do we need it next year or do we, is, are we going to be okay for next year? And then put somebody on maybe a year after if we get other developments going on around town or different things that are happening. Because I think we're keeping up with the workload right now with what we have with, with the people. And, and so I think that maybe this is premature and we're a year in advance that we can put this off for a year.
Well, I definitely would like to hear Kane's response at our next meeting for sure. I know we don't, we're not planning on buying a fourth mower next year. So the seasonal help must be weak whacking and that type of trimming and that doesn't require a mower.
Oh, and I would really like to see someone on a golf cart, if you will, or whatever, with a water tank going around and making sure that the flowers are, I mean, because those are costly to keep replacing every year, right? So making sure that they're maintained and, and some of those things.
Let's find out from Kane.
Because I mean, if you, I'm sorry.
Another thing, Sonny, if you're talking to Kane, you know, I guess I'm back, new back on here. But when Donnie and Jim and Don ran it, there was two of them and they got a seasonal guy helping in the summer, they had all kinds of time. And now we're adding all these people. I mean, maybe we need it, but I don't know how much new we've got over the time. I know we're going to need more with the sewer plant going on. But if Kane maybe can explain to us why there's so much, you know, from three years ago, I don't see the city of Arno growing a lot. But, you know, except the workforce.
The reason for, the background for the third person and the three mowers was to dedicate before when we had two mowers and three mowers or two mowers and two people, they were mowing every day. And so with the three mowers, and it's working out this way, Kane can confirm this, but with our three mowers, we're mowing just three days a week. The seasonal people here are Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. So that gives us two extra days. Granted, the seasonal people are here, but they're mowing just those three days. And, and that's where John is, I'm sorry, with Cory coming on to help out with that extra work, so. And by mowing three mowers, we're putting less hours on each mower as well. So we get a better retail or resale value too, so.
Well, and you're also adding trails and, and.
They're moving a lot more too right of ways and, and the trails and, and.
The other thing I was going to say for the flowers and different things that way, if you look at, at cities like Pine Island or you look at, at Austin, it's actually the merchants that turn around that, that end up with Pine Island, they do, because they, they pay for the pots.
Right, but the city maintains them.
But I, you know, so there's a, a joint effort that there is where it doesn't just fit a hundred percent on the city is what I was trying to. And you, I, I'm just gaining from what I.
We'll bring this back when Kane tells, talks to us, so let's continue on.
Okay, so then we've talked about the project specialist that I want to bring on. And that's just, I budgeted twenty hours a week for twenty six weeks. Line seventeen.
Line seventeen, okay.
At twenty dollars an hour. Now, my question is, depending on what your attorney says, whether or not that person can be a contractor or needs to be an employee.
Yeah, question.
Yes.
Did you get any responses from your ad that you put in?
I have, I have.
Sonny, are you looking at this as a, as a temporary or did you say it's permanent?
No, this is, this is a temporary position. And it's, and I'm not sure that it can be done in twenty six weeks and twenty hours a week. So it, it could extend longer than that, but it also gives us an opportunity. I was hoping for contractships so that you can kind of get a feel for somebody's work ethic.
And a contract for hire.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you looking at the other one too for the assistant to fill that position right now as well?
In twenty twenty three, yes.
Okay, not this year, this year.
Not this year. Because I, I, I think although we probably could, I, I don't know, I'd have to look at the numbers and see if the budget would allow that this year.
So what are your thoughts with, at thirteen thousand, ten thousand is over in planning and zoning?
Yes.
So what, is that filing too?
Because, well, you think about all the, we want to move from where everything is filed by topic to really a property-based filing system.
Okay.
So, so everything that you ever wanted to know happened on this piece of property, it, it's in one file, you know, and there can be some cross referencing. We did lots split, okay? So this one had a lot split. There's a note in the file that C also filed with this new address. So again, it's just all property-based. And that's, that's where that, that just the split comes from is, and that's kind of twenty five percent admin and seventy five percent planning and zoning.
My opinion.
We need to.
Yeah. So it's following the property, not the person.
And then that's that calculation and then the part-time person, this is kind of what you had with. I knew it started with the M ninety seven and green paint. Twenty five hours a week, fifty two hours a week. So, oops, that doesn't, total fifty two. That was, I initially had her at twenty hours a week. So that it's either twenty hours and ten forty, that would be half time. Or if we go twenty five hours a week is not ten forty, but. Raise.
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred? Thank you. So thirteen hundred hours. I know the total was right.
We're going to change that to thirteen hundred?
No, just in the, in the description of hours. For line eighteen, it says part-time.
Should be thirteen hundred.
Yes. And then that person is actually split between admin and finance. It all shows up in that. We'll get to that column. And then Cory and Jim, they're full time, assuming twenty eighty hours for the year. Same with Renee. And I have splits for all of those into the various categories that you can see there. And then also Kane. Now with regard to, okay, so now we've moved from the description column. That's kind of the justification for how the calculations were made and who the people are and the current hourly. And then there's that cross referencing for you on the budget line. This is referred to as the detail page. And then the other document is, is budget. I've proposed an eight and a half percent increase to adjust for inflation. And then the next column is the annualized based on that.
We bring up the question even though it's an open session, just to bring note back the difference between Cory and Jim and leave it at, at, as an open session.
We're talking numbers now, so if you want to talk about just those wages.
Yeah, we can talk.
We can talk. I didn't know if that was, okay.
Yeah, we just can't talk.
We're not talking names.
Okay, oops. I knew there were a lot. I'm trying to figure out what I can. But I, I, I think that there should be a distinction there. I think it makes sense, you know, for just the longevity of what Jim has been or he has been.
Well, and one of the things that I'd like to see and set up is a step system so that it incorporates not only tenure with the, with the city, but also ways for them to increase their wage as well. For example, you know, your, your deputy city clerk, you know, earning certain designations will allow them to like skip over a step and go from, you know, step X to step two. So that's all part of that, you know, relooking at your job description, looking at your salary scales, wage scales, and doing all of that.
With, with that in mind, which makes sense, and I agree a hundred percent with that, you know, what's going on in the budget process. Should we maybe make an adjustment to put that into effect to have that take place for next year?
I'm not going to have that accomplished in terms, in time for you to.
We're going to have to wait till after next year, then. We're gonna have to wait till after next year, then they're able to do it.
I tend to be in favor of taking, one, what's making twenty-four dollars an hour, and two, it's making twenty-four eighty-three and bump him up to twenty-six eighty.
Yeah, based on tenure and.
And maybe as a job performance and the amount of years he's been here, yeah.
I mean, just just the adjustments of someone coming in.
Right.
But I think that your point.
I I I agree with with that, absolutely, but I just thought with this, I think we might want to address it.
Yeah, you can make, this is, this is the time to have. Or anything like that.
Let's let's do that, you agree, okay, let's do two dollars.
Gentlemen, number two.
One thing I have just a concern is that from a pay equity standpoint, in that this applies to both men and women, tenure, the position. Cause there are various, I would say, what appear to be very strict guidelines based on job description, ranking, men, women. Years of experience, and so there's a whole pay equity compliance reporting system that we wanna make sure we're not violating, so.
I find it hard to.
I'd be very cautious about jumping into something that I recognize the difference in the pay, but. But I. Expectation of eight and a half, you know, this is, this is really a non-performance related increase. Well, this is inflation rating, so it's, performance rating is not really noted in here. So the step process is good and we've, I thought about it, we've gotten, did some research, a lot of cities around here do the step pay increase. Um I think it's the right way to go because it takes. But one way, there's good and bad because it puts everybody in the same loop, if you go six years and this labor grade eight, you're gonna get this raise next time. It doesn't reflect performance either, no.
Maybe, I mean, how did Jim's or the one start out at uh twenty-four dollars an hour? And we had one that had more experience working for the city, what was worth only eighty-three cents an hour more?
I don't think it was ever, it was an oversight, nobody ever looked at those two numbers and thought, we're gonna do this to that other person. What we needed to do at that point was hire somebody, what we're running up against at this point in time is needing to pay people. To get them into the job, so there was never a, it was not. Carl, you're interrupting me. There was never a.
He wants to hammer me.
Carl, let Dana finish.
I don't have COVID, so I guess I. I I was heard you had COVID, that you couldn't come Friday because you had COVID, five days in.
Okay, timeout, please, timeout.
It's been seven.
Finish. Please finish.
I don't remember what I was saying, I think it was something to do with, there was never anything malicious against Jim, we were all like Jim. There was a process where we all voted for these numbers. Not one of us caught it, we should have probably caught it, Kane should have. You know, we should have, these numbers aren't necessarily in front of us, they definitely aren't in front of us when we're hiring. So when we come to it at this point, this is a great time to discuss it, but please don't accuse any of us. Of thinking less of Jim because we, of of one person because we hired another person at that rate.
Made that compliment, I said, well, just a slap in Jim's face, I think he was all eighty-three cents worth of interest.
I don't think that was ever the intent, Carl, because I think the hire was a standalone decision. Would not benefit of additionally.
When we did the hire for that, we were given A and B and there were two different people that were on there and it went. Through the qualifications of what they had for other uh schooling and and um. There were different things that they were qualified for or certified for that were in that, if we, if I remember correctly. And that's all we had as we were looking at their certifications and the directions we were going. Nobody had any idea who it was when when it was was done that way. And 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 we didn't even know, had no idea who it was, you know, when, so it was blind when we did the hire. And and so it was all written and and those were the decisions that we made at that time.
So I guess what I would say is, I I I don't, there there wasn't anything hitting one against the other or one. But I think this is a time to, I I don't wanna say right or wrong, because there wasn't a wrong. But this is the time to make the adjustments, because we're doing budget. One question I have is the eight and a half percent, is that, is that standard? Is that the standard cost of living? And I don't know, I'm just wondering. But isn't that considering cost of living? Inflation and cost of living, I understand them to be the same.
Cost of, I think they're set by two different organizations.
Okay.
But what I was looking at here and and since we're in the budgeting part of it. If if we budgeted for another couple dollars for gentleman we're talking about. We can put in the budget whether we wanna put it back as as how we qualifies for that, at least it would be available in the budget. For him for next year as a budgeting, maybe I'm wrong, but I mean, that's what my thoughts would be.
Cause I I would say the first of the year is the time to make.
Oh, I agree.
I'm not telling you enough, but but put it in, so at least it's in there.
Right, right, absolutely, and and make note.
Well, and and again, this is your preliminary budget, that's gonna determine your preliminary levy. We can make adjustments and I can also do the research on the um.
So I mean, it's not to go against what we need to look at, but at least to have it in the budget to be able to.
I think it's worth looking at, I think, I agree with Rayland, we have to be careful, we can't just.
Oh, yeah.
You can't just say, I wish this person had more money and give that to them.
I agree a hundred percent.
That's a dangerous, that's a slippery slope, because you have to base it on something.
I agree, I agree.
And that that could get us in a lot of trouble.
Be based on experience.
But I mean, let's just put it in the budget and then it's in there and then research it further is what we need to do.
I agree, let's just put it in there and then determine how it would classify.
Yeah.
Because there there's.
Well, let's just put twenty-six eighty-three at least for the budget.
Well, that wouldn't be that, that wouldn't be the budget, though, it'd be twenty-eight ninety-four for next year.
Oh, yeah, okay, you're right, that's like a throwing number.
But I, I mean, I guess I'd be more comfortable going somewhere in between there, but.
No, I just, just for the budget, I'm not.
Sure, sure. We can come back to it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Because here's the other thing too, when you do talk about pay equity, there's, you can't look at just um Cory and Jim. I would also include Renee in there.
We got caught once already several years back where we paying the public works more than our clerk. And we fortunately got it straightened out before we had a penalty, the penalties are a hundred dollars a day. High nine, I went through this a couple, five, six years ago.
This is it.
So pay equity is very important and I I can appreciate all the comments, but there are guidelines. As a state employee and the person that we're hiring that we need to. We just need to make sure it's okay and compliant.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
So if uh for the sake of um. Budget purposes, I I wouldn't, at this point, perhaps hone in on specific numbers. Or especially in lines, what is that, nineteen, twenty-eight and twenty-one. But if you wanted to adjust that percentage.
That's that's my concern, I'm concerned about the precedent we're setting. Eight and a half percent, I've never seen anybody get an eight and a half percent raise.
I'm just saying.
So I just justification for whatever we do next year.
Right.
If we go into a step program, all of a sudden, it may be a three percent raise. But here's, here's the program.
Right.
Maybe it's just a one-time adjustment.
Right.
As our rationale, we can explain that to employees, it's not an expectation.
We're also in very unique times too, that we haven't been in in the past, how many years, thirty years, that that's going on right now in the economy. Uh then we wanna retain the employees, we don't wanna lose employees, because that's a plus too, and it goes along with it, so.
And I'm sure every city that has a step program is experiencing those pains right now.
Absolutely.
There's not eight and a, eight and a half percent in those ranks right now, I'm sure, or three or three and a half.
Yeah, I even I know me, at Mayo, it's definitely not that high. And we're on a step program.
Well, this is preliminary budget too, okay, so.
So, okay.
So what do you wanna do there for those three perhaps?
For nineteen, twenty, twenty-one?
Yes. You you wanna.
Do we know, are other cities, is that their percentage?
I'm gonna say.
Are we equitable?
Well, cause here's the, do you remember what you were finding? I didn't get a chance to really, I apologize for not actually looking. Deep in some of these um positions, but I I agree with you, the eight and a half percent is. Different because are no good, different, but we're coming in line. And and I think you'll find that once you have that step program. It's it's gonna make your job much easier.
I think you hit on the point that maybe as a city, we were low anyway.
Yeah.
And so this is getting us up to us a more in line, if you will, for a city our size and going forward, that's just a. It's one-time adjustment and we did this a year and a half ago. With uh Geraldine and Renee and everybody, we we bumped them up, you know, but.
Businesses do that.
So until we get our step system in place, this is the quick solution, basically.
And that's why I was wondering about, you know, where do we compare um and is it fair and equitable, because. We're a city and if you look across the spectrum at other cities our size, are we being equitable? Um, cause if we're not.
The other thing that I will say too is, you know, sometimes. It's difficult to compare this city with other cities, for example, um.
Well, we don't have, we don't have infrastructure, we don't have buildings, we don't have, you know, we have water currently and that's it.
Right.
So it's hard.
But in addition to that, we're changing that.
We are, right, but it's hard to come find another city to compare us to.
Right, but even in terms of um Joe, Alan and I were having a conversation about. I said, you know, how many miles of streets do you have? And, you know, he pointed out, Ornoco has a lot of miles of city. Or its boundaries, because you have a lot of curves and and uh. Oh, I mean, Minnesota's not even. So, you know, those kind of things all come into play, so so sometimes it's difficult to to determine. You know, we talk about how engaged you as counselors are on the various committees. That all, you know, impacts your staff as too, right? Um as well, you know, because we talked about Gold Rush and how active um employees were with that and and national they don't. So so there are several things that make your city unique. But I would, I would, um, you know, if you wanted to make adjustments within those three lines. To something, you know, I'm just saying, you know, if you're going to do something for the one, I suggest you do it.
Think if we adjust one, we have to look at at others and and maybe one's not gonna be adjusted as much as the other. But I think, you know, in terms of equity, we have to do it.
Well, um.
You know.
I think what we gotta do is set a guideline, so what we're gonna hire people for, we just can't go and hire somebody. You know, with no experience or nothing and put them up right next to a guy what's got.
Well, and I I don't.
You know, I think.
I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, push back just a little bit, because my understanding is that Cory came on with some unique skill sets. And licensures that weren't necessarily part of the.
And that's what I'm saying, we, it, I mean, he had a list of, I mean, you remember those paragraphs that we were looking at when we did that? Not knowing who the people were, the qualifications they had.
But you're right, going forward, we will have broader information to to inform the decision-making. And a range, at least a pay range um for the hire. That's going to be reflective of everybody and and the pay equity.
So if we're looking at this and if we were looking at at the one individual and we're looking at those three different items right now. And since in the budgeting initial stage of what's going on, why don't we do the same for the other two for the budget? For the preliminary budget and then, cause we can adjust afterwards, but at least we'll get the preliminary in there.
As far as the eight point five.
No, I was looking at, well, the eight point five is 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 in there, because that will be the adjustment to bring in, but I was thinking. You know, going up another two dollars for both of those, just on the preliminary budget. So we can adjust again, but we wanted to the preliminary for the end of September, right?
Twenty-three, twenty-two?
We knew we won a dollar all rage.
To approve, we wanna approve the budget at your regular meeting on the twentieth.
Right.
Because it has to be submitted by the third.
But then we make the final adjustment before December thirty-first, okay, so.
I guess.
So you, so increase twenty through twenty-two, Jim?
Uh, I was doing, I was doing eighteen, nineteen, and we already looked at twenty.
Eighteen?
No, no, excuse me, it would be nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
So what are you saying, Dana?
I'm just saying that that's, so that's what you're suggesting adding in.
Yeah. Yeah, for nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, since we looked at that as one.
Now, when we're done with that, I want.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Exactly, I just said that.
Yeah, so I'm I'm going to, I'm gonna make a a suggestion for twenty-two. Given where we are now and given where we're going to be with in a year and the fact. That, and we see this in other cities, the fact that Kane manages people. The fact that he's going to be putting in more hours and right now he's hourly, so we're getting thing for. Those additional hours and also considering the experience, uh the. Not the experience, but the 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 step up in terms of um. His job is just gonna change, um the requirements in his job, I'm gonna suggest Kane move to salary. Cause right now Kane is getting comp time, he's getting hourly wage, he's going to be managing more people. He's he's, he's got a lot that's coming in a short time. And I think the fact that he's managing people, he should be salary alone, just with that fact. And I think we'll still come out ahead if we move him to salary.
Those are all good questions, Trey. I don't know if that's.
I would support that as administrator, simply because one of the, one of the defining criteria for whether you're an exempt or non-exempt employee is, do you manage people? And.
City set.
Yeah. And, and that's, we want him to be management, we need to treat him like management. In my view, it's, it's a council decision, but that's my recommendation as well.
Makes sense.
Conversation I think we should have with Kane. Because he may see that as a big turnoff. I don't know. I'm just saying that's the other, yes or no.
I have had a conversation with him about that.
Yeah.
And, and the indication that that's where I wanted him to be going. And it's, it's, it's never intended to be a punishment for someone to shift from.
No.
So, you know, if, if we're looking at, okay, so here he is on line twenty. That person, okay, so with an eight and a half percent inflation bump, that's putting him at seventy-three. You know, if we look at something that's, because what would he be right now?
Since when we were looking at hiring Kane? And we were doing the ranking, looking at the ranking, the state ranking and the position that he was in as a director versus a city clerk treasurer, he was ranked higher than a city clerk treasurer, and that's why he was paid more than than Jared Lynn, previous city clerk.
He'd be at about seventy-one, three ninety right now.
Are you looking on that other sheet? Was that, oh?
No, I'm just going at current with what it would be.
Oh, okay. That surprises me though, quite honestly, Mayor, because, and, and here's the reason why, is because your clerk treasurer has statutory responsibilities versus the public works director not being bound by those. You know what I'm saying?
Oh, I, I can see your point, yeah. I can see the background.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be interesting. Was that when the clerk treasurer was at the lead position in the office or was there an administrator above that?
Personnel policy.
Yes, the whole structure is.
State ranking system, I can't think of the right title right now, but I can share that with you, our rationale for doing that.
Okay. Okay.
But.
That'd be interesting.
You've answered a question. You've had a conversation with him, so.
I have had a conversation. In fact, you might have seen me when he was out trimming that tree out there and I was out talking with him. But, yeah, we, so we have.
For now, should we just?
That's kind of.
Keep this something to come back next week then, or for sure at our council meeting, or what?
Um.
As far as changing it to the seventy-three thousand, whatever that number is, I don't know, as a salary position.
Well, did anybody talk to him about roughly what he's thinking he'd want for salary or what we?
At the office, well, I, I think we would. Together, but, yeah, you know, it's hard to say right now.
Well, I'm certain.
I, I guess my question would be, and Sunny, I'll ask you, based on your experience, is this something where the person in that role has any say into it? If the city sees that it's for the better of the city? And, and no, we wouldn't do it to make enemies or to lose anybody. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't do it from a perspective of saying, okay, we're gonna do that because you're gonna make less money doing that. And that's, that's not what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm looking at the future that's gonna be on us within a year and look at his responsibilities and the added staff and the added time. You know, there'll be some, you know, there, there might be dry spells where he doesn't have to put in extra time. But there may be times where he has to put in a lot of extra time, do what it takes. That, that's what I'm talking about. I, I think we need, we need to look at it and I think we need to budget for it.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting like for line twenty-two that if, as an hourly person, if that annualized is, is seventy-three, that, that we look at a sixty-five thousand dollar salary. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that, so that's kind of a starting point, kind of.
That's.
What I'm.
And, and my thought, I'll just give you guys my rationale or my thought of how we could look at even beginning to calculate. And then also, I think we need to do our due diligence to see what that position for a city of this size, what the average is.
And then I think that's the start point, which is what we have to do is just look at that.
Yeah, because what I would do, because no matter what, I think we owe that person an explanation as to the background. And if we come up with a number, we need to back up that number. But I would, I would look at between comp time and regular time, what are we looking at? Then compare that. Because, well, then, then bump it a, a percent based on, well, I would, I'm not gonna say a specific percent, but look at then what the average is and understand, okay, what, what is our gap? If there is a gap, I'm not saying there is, I don't know, but look at it from that perspective and then get some feedback from it. I mean, this shouldn't be a bad thing for him.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, those type of questions, in my opinion, should come from the personnel committee back to the council.
Yeah.
Versus us having this discussion over.
And I had a bit of a discussion about it.
You had a comment?
I was just thinking, you know, it's getting awful late, you know, and the budget and trying to figure out all this for him. You know, give him his raise this year, get Sunny to work with all the licensing and all, if he's willing to get all that and figure out a good salary to give, you know? I mean.
We have to plan it in this one, because this is for next year. We have to, we have to put some kind of a number for this coming year.
Yeah, it's for twenty-three. If you leave him on hourly next year, I mean, it's coming down pretty fast.
Well, I'm. I'm sorry.
To figure out what he's really, until he gets the education to justify paying him a hundred thousand a year, eighty thousand or fifty thousand. You know, there's a lot of stuff what's gonna happen in between now. We don't want to put all the reward to him today.
Absolutely not.
As what's gonna be a year for now when he's at all his certificates.
Yeah, and, yeah. I totally agree, because that in itself is, is kind of a step system, a goal system, that when you get here, this is the potential. You get here, this is, you know, it's, it's quadrants, it's ranges. I mean, you see businesses do that.
Because I mean, if we don't give no reward for doing all that.
That's right. He's got to have incentive. Everybody has to have incentive, so. I, I'm willing to. Yes, I'm willing, I'll, I'll talk with him again tomorrow. But I'm, I'm willing to get some of this information. Renee, I can work with you. You were awesome getting the other stuff for me.
And I have a quote more, so we probably have that.
Okay. Ain't she gone for next two days?
Oh, no, I can't do it tomorrow.
Sunny, I'll work with you. You're here.
Yeah, I'm letting her go.
Okay, so.
Okay.
We agree, we'll just hold on that one and get some numbers.
And remember, we still have one more workshop.
Right.
Before the, the next council.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, so line twenty-three.
Okay.
Can we talk about that?
Yes.
I've already kind of put the cat out of the bag. So with that said, um, we do have an opportunity to keep that person at, at, at a point eight-seven. And I, I think it'd be great for that to happen. And, and I'll, I'll just go through my, my recommendation and then let, let's talk about it. Because I, I think, as we talked earlier, that person's definitely worthy of, of an extension. They are considered a, a permanent employee right now because of the way it had to be written up. So I, I say we convert that to a point eight-seven FTE, which is, it calculates to thirty-four point eight hours a week. Okay? Eliminate the interim in that title and just change it to city, Ornoco city administrator. Obviously, we need to create a job description. Irregardless, that job description has to be created. And it be a salaried position. And we've had a conversation that we have a guarantee of three days a week. But the agreement was always on call for the days not here. Still point eight-seven FTE, doing exactly the job that, that's being performed right now. So then my proposal would be, and then I'm gonna tell you how I come to this proposal. So my proposal would be ninety thousand a year. Because the average salary for a city our size for that position from LMC, the average salary is eighty-eight, nine, twenty-nine per year. However, there'd be a savings there because the person in that position right now has agreed not to take our health or dental benefits. So we would gain there, because they've already got health and dental. Retirement would be the same. Vacation accrual would come in on, under the same accrual schedule as, as everyone else, all other employees. And, and just to note, we were paying our previous city clerk position sixty per year plus overtime slash comp time. And, and we were paying for, I, I'm not sure what we were paying for health and dental benefits for that person. So that's my recommendation. And we can, we can talk about it. If you want to know what it figures out per hour, and I hope my calculation here is right, is forty-nine, seventy-five. So if you look at that overall, we're not that far off. If you add the benefits and, and I, I guess I look at, number one, the experience, and we're moving it from a city clerk to a city administrator. And, you know, if the, being fair and equitable at, at eighty-eight, let's say eighty-nine a year, we're, we're a thousand dollars from that. And I would say experience is worth that.
I support that recommendation. I guess the one question I have is vacation. Is there a guideline for vacation?
Because of the time.
A PTO is, you don't have to.
Pay you, okay.
Yeah.
You accrue that, so many hours per paper. Okay.
I got one question on that. Was Sunny coming down here and spending the, the time that she is, does she get expenses too, which I would recommend that she gets for staying where she's staying at while she's there?
Well, I extrapolated because my fees, because initially, right, I was gonna, like candidate A, was gonna do contractorship. So that's how my rates were set. At the sixty-five dollars onsite, forty-five offsite to take into account those costs of, of that kind of thing. So that's where it came from. And that's kind of where on line twenty-three, that number is extrapolated from my time sheets.
Okay.
So that's, that's, you know, then you take that and it, for annualized, it would be a hundred and three, eighty. But that would have included those.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you're, you're covered with that because that's only fair. Okay, so.
But here's the thing, you, you wouldn't pay lodging for any other employee.
Right.
I mean, I, yeah. This would, yeah. I mean, those are kind of, the, my willingness to accept ninety is conditioned on being able to have that flexibility to, to guarantee you three hours, three days a week built around your schedule, right? So typically, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, except planning and zoning week, and it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And I acknowledge that. So, so just that kind of flexibility is worth something to me to, to take that.
If you let enough hours, enough time, I mean.
Well, she's on call too, if you need her. So she's on video?
No, I mean, enough to get your work all done.
Yeah.
Comfortable with the overtime.
Well, that's what the time I'm spending on site, three days a week, that's hundred, you know, full-time. Even though it's considered point eight-seven, full-time FTE equivalent, I still have kind of an entrepreneurial mindset where it's, it's full-time to me.
Right, so it's salary. So if she feels that she needs to put more in, she can put more in. Right?
To your benefit?
To our benefit.
But I mean, I didn't want her to feel slighted.
Slight, yes, yeah, totally agree. And we talked.
The thirty-four point eight hours divided by the three days is eleven point six hours. Those could be spread out over a five-day week.
Say that one more time.
So the thirty-four point eight hours, point six, thirty-four point eight divided by three is eleven point six hours per day.
Yeah.
Three here for three days, so.
Yeah.
Some days you may be here eight, nine, ten, but you have Monday and Friday or Friday and Tuesday, whatever it is.
Right. And it's a salary.
Right.
You know, I, I, I may only work a eight-hour day.
Exactly.
With the expectation.
Kind of.
You need to have that.
I thought there was a jury that went by at ten o'clock, what are they, you know, working?
But, yeah, and with the expectation that there, there'll be days that you just won't be here because you're thirty-four point eight, so basically.
And, and it might be snow days or whatever else that, that fit into it, but you're available by computer and, and by Zoom anyway, but.
You don't collect the clock watch or. So the other thing that I'll, that I'll bring up in this discussion is, the idea is that she will also, at some point, because we have this, this assistant that we want to budget for, so then that assistant will come on. She'll be training that assistant to help shift and balance workload as well.
Not only for myself.
For Renee as well.
As well.
Exactly. So to me, I think it, I think it's a great idea and the fact that we would be able to keep you and keep moving forward, I think it's a win-win. I think if you feel like it's a win.
I didn't know it was a good option. I didn't know it was a possibility, so this is just like Christmas right now.
It is Christmas. It is, and everybody, all in favor?
Yeah, I mean, a hundred percent, yeah. I'm a little teary.
You don't think of retirement in the next twenty years?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
But it has to go to council. Yeah. Okay.
Revising the budget, I will make that.
You're happy with this?
Dancing.
Is your husband happy with it?
So, so with that, a couple of things that I will mention. So with that, a couple things that I will mention also, with that, Personnel Committee will go away. But I would say Personnel Committee not go away until that's permanent. And.
On January.
Yeah, January one, because, just so everyone understands, Sunny is contracted. To January one.
Well, actually, I have, my contract is open-ended. So at whatever time. The council wants to make. That decision, that's.
And you put on the agenda for September twenty?
And might have to leave it, but. Hey, doesn't go into effect since January.
This is, um.
Okay.
This is excellent.
Thank you. Okay, so then. Used to get the budget. But I think those were, those were the weeds, and I think we're, we went out of the weeds. So then the other thing, um, and you can take these with and, and if you want to get back, but by and large, we've already talked about the salaries. For the mayor and council. Your payroll taxes, that's the ghost. Um, again, are, are calculated on salary.
What line are you on? Five?
I'm on eight. Page one of three. And then, um, food, lodging, meals, mileage. Conference free fees, dues and memberships, I kinda just left those at the same as last year.
So how did we do for, for actual? Because I mean, I, I like going to those conferences and they were like up in Duluth.
Yep, okay, so same kind of layout that we had before, numbered, so we can stay on the same line. Your coding and the description, and then a set of boxes if we wanna make changes. The proposed preliminary budget coming from me. The justification on how that calculation was made or where it came from. And then you have for twenty twenty two, budget and actual through August. And then actuals for twenty one, twenty nineteen and eighteen. My bad.
So my question about budget for. Conferences. Are they going to be in person again? Like the new, you know what I mean, the, because we had to do everything online. Jim and I were elected, we had to do everything online.
Everything is in person. Yeah, because I went in person, which was the first time that they did that.
Oh, good, okay.
Back in, in January, so, yeah, it was, it's in person.
Well, and I, I think it's, I think we need to be prepared either way, right?
Sure.
Because it's.
And I, I just didn't know if there was a cost difference, and if we were taking that to like no.
I didn't, I looked at what that actuals were and thought.
It's been, and they've been all online for a while. That's what I'm.
In twenty twenty two?
No.
But you're, you would've been the only person that went too.
No, well, both Riley and I went up to Duluth. Okay, and so, I mean, that's, that's one that I think is good to go.
Yeah, sometimes they're in Rochester as well, so.
Next year is gonna be Duluth.
But I'm talking about the L N. New training.
Uh, the new training was, was in person, it was two days, and it's awesome.
I know, we didn't get to do it. We didn't get it.
Test online.
I just wanna make sure that your numbers go back to twenty nineteen, pre-pandemic.
Yeah, well, you can see, yeah, because you can see in the actual columns for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, those are really light.
Okay, yeah.
But, um, I just went with.
Because they resumed, we didn't have.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think if we're.
Just making sure.
No, excellent point, thank you.
So the, the, uh, the actual will go by, up and up by another eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty. Salaries. That's a, that's a November check that comes up, so. That three, thirty three hundred dollars for actual is really gonna be closer to twenty four. Twenty twenty four and twenty five thousand, so it matches the budget. Right now it's zero, because we haven't had the expenditure. So, for salaries for mayor and council.
So let me ask you, with, with inflation that there is, are you not gonna put inflationary in there and keep it the same?
For mayor and council salaries?
For the rest of the stuff, for conferences and stuff, because that's gonna go up next year. So I'm just saying, let's, let's kick that up by ten percent for just inflation.
What, why do you think that'll go up?
We had to try and keep our budget.
This is just preliminary.
But I wish we knew what that total was.
That's why we'll come back next week too, so. Yeah, we're, we're ten, twelve percent over our budget now already, so.
What, ten?
He said we're ten to twelve percent over.
I'm guessing it is, now. Flat for the last three years, so it's gonna be sticker shock for residents, so just keep that in mind.
I mean, I would, I would, but just for inflation, looking at, at kicking that up, you know?
Well, I know you, um. I'm, I'm trying to consider resident perspective, council perspectives. And just all, all those factors that come into play, right?
But this is just preliminary and what goes on, so if we went up ten percent, it would be twenty eight, uh, oh, one five.
Or which line are you looking at? Oh, okay. So another.
So what you're saying is, put it up now, but then we come back with everything to see the bottom line, then we start whacking.
Right.
So this is the wish list.
Well, you gotta, if you're looking at, at the budget first time around, that's where you.
So you're saying twenty eight thousand.
The lines eight through thirteen. What's ten percent? Okay, then, the next section. Line sixteen through twenty six. And again, this is, this budget reflects those spreads that you saw earlier. Pull the numbers in.
So line seventeen.
Yeah, so that's.
Twenty five thousand, it's.
It's cross reference to. But it's only reflective of the admin and finance costs. Together, because. Those other splits show up in the other categories. See, this is how you ended up, this is how you ended up with, um, owing, what was it, seven, nine thousand dollars extra in. Work, work comm, because. The budget wasn't split to the categories for all your public works employees. Seven to none. I can't remember what the number was, but, but if you, and we talked a little bit about this. Um, we're implementing the new timesheet, so that it, it calculates. Where the time is split in these very same categories, so that we'll be able to better. Time track. So does that make sense, Mayor?
Well, I just don't, and then line, L twenty three, I don't see the twenty five thousand nine seventy.
It's twelve ninety, twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty five.
Got it, thank you.
And then admin finance.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Okay. So then. And then I just, again, um. Your, your paric contribution and the payroll taxes are tied to. To the salary piece. Most of that stuff is self-explanatory, came from other. Um, budget numbers. I'm surprised for. Maybe just. Line. Twenty two with an error, oh no. That is, um, correct. I budgeted, because, for example, we had an opportunity to go to, and where was that, Albert Lee? I think, um. On a boat, right? They were gonna have, um, a couple of speakers. The, the League of Minnesota Cities is an excellent resource, not only for. Um, mayors and council, but staff as well, and then. The state has different regions that meet together as well, and. This, the Albert Lee thing was for this region that we could have attended, and on the boat thing. So sometimes there's a little cost involved, and that's, that's what that means, is just budgeting thirty bucks a month. For twelve months, just to. Reinvigorate ourselves, commiserate with. Like souls, so that's where that. Questions? Okay, the same thing maybe is true, here we go for, um, twenty eight through thirty seven. For the deputy clerk position, um, I didn't see, uh, conference lodging. So that may be a new account that we need to set up, I don't know why we get to. Go to conferences, but not have. Oh, okay. So we'll just look at that too, but then also for, um, line thirty four, the same kind of deal. And then some other things.
And that new hire is supposed to start one January, is your plan?
That would be the assistant, not deputy, correct?
Well, and, and I, I think I mentioned, I, I, uh, take a look at the numbers. And see how they play out, because we haven't had Michelle for some time. And we're talking about, um, that position. And I'm starting that person at a little less.
You're just making a slight modification in the job description that. The office assistant.
To include, and I, you see for that position I have, it's split, spread, excuse me, finance and administration, so.
Both got it.
Yeah, getting that, um, you know, some utility support, perhaps, you know? You know, again, trying to. Trying to spur her into picking a track.
And Sunny and our actuals are to date, right?
These actuals that are showing here are through August.
They're through August, okay.
I think, um, yeah, up in the upper right-hand corner, August twenty ninth. Okay, so then the elections, you see that's non-elect year, so. I didn't think there was much in there. Then we're into. This financial administration piece. Which. There are still some questions I have in, in terms of kind of the coding piece, and that's no reflection on, on, uh, Renee, because. We inherited some stuff, right? But I am showing the, on line fifty nine, the contract labor, I've listed it. As con, under contract labor, but again, questioning whether or not that can be contract, or whether it should be employed. So I kinda have, kind of, it's a hybrid and included payroll taxes. On line fifty three. In case we have to have. Pay taxes on that.
So Sunny, line sixty four, do we not need that, or does that come with L M C? So, uh, being associated with L M C, or?
I think it's part of your, um, overall, uh, liability insurance, I don't know. And then those, um. I didn't do your, um, insurance split, but Ryland can tell you that they, they get a little complicated and, and, uh. Knowing how to, how to really do that and project. This is gonna be the tough one when we start talking about here. What's gonna happen with the wastewater treatment facility when that comes online, you know, when we have to insure it? So. But again, you know, my understanding is that that's all kind of been built into. Your performer on how you're gonna make those payments. Is that correct, Mayor?
Well, there's also expenses too, expenditures within that utility budget that Joe put together. And maybe that's next week's bill discussion.
A, a little bit, wanna talk about the debt. And how that's gonna affect the.
Just like it is, you know, we don't, I don't think we talked about the water utility fund here. But. It's the same thing as our water utility fund, it's gonna be just a sewer fund, or we may combine them too, I don't know.
I'd keep it separate. Just from an operation standpoint.
So there is a separate fund number for. The sewer fund. But there's also. Expenditures that helps going to justify, um, the rates and everything, who knows how much you have to pay our expenditures and cover. All of our expenditures too, but we have revenues coming in, we know what those are, we have a set of expenditures, what it's gonna cost to operate the facility. And that goes into giving us what we need for rate to cover. Balance that all out.
Yeah, because that's a separate enterprise fund.
Yes.
That, that theoretically, your enterprise funds should be self-sufficient. Apart from.
Because we're borrowing twelve million dollars. Let's cover our maintenance costs.
Joe had mentioned that there's, um, like, contract, contract employees figured in. To the plan for the first year, or whatever it was. I'd like to understand where that is, and do we have to figure that in? For twenty twenty three, or is that already figured into the, the water and sewer overall cost?
No, well, the total construction operation on twenty. No, well, the plant was operational twenty, or July fifteenth. Even though the project isn't completed till, I think, May of twenty-twenty-four, but we're going to start hooking up all the eighty-eight. Low-pressure sewer systems and all the developments, River Park, through those one-point connections. Anytime after that, um, July fifteenth, because the lift stations, everything has to be operational to transport the sewage to the plant. So between July fifteenth, end of the year is when we. Ellingson comes in and they put in all the eighty-eight low-pressure grinder systems. Fitzgerald has to hook in all the development plan, or development one-point connections at the drainfields for River Park, here Woodlands and. Purplewood Hills, but at the same time, then also residents can start hooking up their individual systems too.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, cuz Joe had mentioned staff. At one of the council meetings, that some, some staff. I thought he had said some staff were figured in as contracted to start out with. And I'd like to understand, you know, what that is, and then know what that will have to be. After that point too, I think is.
And that really is my proposal to.
So Sunny and I have been talking about hiring somebody for a three-year contract.
Yeah, they typically do three- or five-year contracts.
People's Service out of Omaha, Nebraska, there's Beola is another service.
And I, I know there's, like, inspectors that you have to hire that come in to inspect your plant, or, or sa- uh, safety inspectors.
The beauty of going with a contracted service provider like that.
Yeah.
Is that. Somebody doesn't show up for work one day, that's on them to fill that, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the vehicles are, you know, that's all on them, the reporting is all on them, the testing is all on them. You know, it, it really, um, the liability is, is a huge piece, right? And from my perspective, it, it makes sense to let them work out all the cakes, right? And then have, uh, we can build into any contract that, you know, beginning in, let them have year one. Cuz we talked about a learning curve kind of thing, and this will be, even though that's their business.
And that's our ramp up time.
So year one or two, um, but then build into the contract, they're gonna start taking our guys under their wings, and that gives them. Our guys an opportunity, cuz a lot of times those, um. Earning those credentials or licensure are kind of like an apprentice program.
Right.
You have to put in so many, call it, under a person with this licensure to be able to, to step up to, so. But yeah, that's an enterprise discussion next.
And there are several cities around here that have contracts.
No, they don't. When they started, they did. I thought, I thought Kevin said they had, they had one person for the plant when they started. That's twenty, thirty years. But they did. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so then, are we on line? Already. Okay, so the, the only thing that, on line seventy-two, that was an odd one for me. Because I'm not sure where we are with those expenditures.
So we've passed two resolutions. There's one that's only September agenda to T M O, the Transport Management Association.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, but that resolution, we adopted back in February, that we held the check, cuz it wasn't, wasn't quite developed to the point of. So now there is an M O U agreement that should be on the September agenda, that explains how the money's going to be used, and, uh. So. That spreadsheet that I gave you, or you have pretty well identifies, and I think Renee has that, but really, we're closer to. We received eighty-three thousand. In twenty. Was a carryover from twenty-one, and we used somewhere between fifteen, seven, and nineteen thousand of it. But we did get another payment for eighty-three thousand, so in really the twenty-twenty-three, it's an in-and-out, it's really closer to a hundred and sixteen thousand. Because our total American Rescue Plan expense was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, or something like that. So we've gotten the final payment to use that between now and December of twenty-twenty-four. So I'm not sure what you wanna show in budget, but again, it's in and out with our expenditures. Oh, wait a minute, where's the revenue side here?
We're talking spending. That's next week.
It should've been on the revenue side. Oh, you don't have the revenue side. Oh, okay. Long as those figures match up, whatever it is. So if you want the balance of what we have left, I, we can give you that, it's off that spreadsheet I've been.
So for twenty-twenty-three. Budget, I wanna budget another eighty-three, three twenty-eight?
That's what I would do.
Okay.
Five hundred and seventy-two?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just carrying over.
Yeah.
And it'll be offset by the revenues. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you can see back up in, uh, line fifty-nine, that was that contract labor, oh yeah, I already said that, and then the tax. Okay, good to finish that section then, um, legal services, I just. Used, uh, twenty-twenty-two's budget. With the exception of line E. And.
What I didn't mean, accounting services.
Do we know why that's ten thousand over?
Yeah, eighty.
Line eighty.
I think it looks like I carried a meter of green. But that is largely.
Which one is that?
Line eighty. With ten, ten thousand over already on that one.
I think. And we'll have to check this, because this has, um, auditing and accounting, and I know that. They have been, you know, you've been using, um, your, the accounting section. Of your auditing firm to do some, um. Bank reconciliations, some journal entry, I mean, some of that stuff I really want, that's why I said, but making changes.
That stuff was blended together once upon a time. Right? What firm is that?
Smith and Schaefer.
Smith and Schaefer, yeah, cuz weren't they being used for, um. Budgeting.
There is a reconciliation too, every month, we. We hired them to reconcile our checking accounts.
And that was added, which was scope, that wasn't planned.
Yeah, that was added.
I'm also looking at legal fees, the next one down too, cuz we're actually right at the budget, and it's only. August.
So.
There could've been some. Journal entries that reconcili- reconciled some of the twenty-nine thousand into whack and sack, but I can't tell you that for sure without. Looking at the expenditures, I don't have those.
And the other, oh, just to jump back up on that, um.
Hopefully, a lot of those cases, excuse me, a lot of those charges should be behind us, because it's all part of the wastewater treatment plant, the annexation. There's the assessment fees, and there's just a lot of extra fees that we're not gonna see going forward. It's all part of the process of getting a treatment plant.
Was, well, but.
For legal, are you talking legal or accounting?
No, we're counting accounting first, I went, I jumped on the legal.
So, line eighty, audit and accounting services were ten over, and, and I thought that's what we were talking about.
We were, and I jumped on the other one, but, but is, is some of that because of Geraldine too, and, and looking at that at that time that we were using? Accounting for a while, Renee?
Could be, I'd have to go back and look at.
So, are you reconciling our bank, our checking account every month now?
No, but that's, that's what that note is, I rounded it up, but I'm making changes, that's the goal, is to start bringing that stuff in-house.
So then, that.
Part of that will, I'm sorry.
No.
Part of that will be bringing on that additional help, so that, so that, you know, that'll free us up on some other time too.
So this number could go down.
But we, so we still don't really understand why that's so high, is what I'm hearing.
It's a combination of our auditing, and it's a combination of all the reconciliation they had to do.
And just got thrown in one bucket.
Yes.
Yeah, cuz I'd like to see, I ought to pull the agreement for your audit, and see what the, what portion of that actually is the audit cost. Versus, cuz anything over that's gonna be accounted, right?
It's just going back only two years, or, well, no, three years, I guess.
Well, if you look.
Two years, it's twelve, you know, to go from twelve hundred, or twelve thousand to thirty thousand. That's a big jump.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, hopefully, we can.
Um, which also reminds me, speaking of Smith and Schaefer, um, I had asked Renee to, to tell me the difference between lines fifty-nine and sixty. One's contract labor, the other one is subcontracted services, and I know that, um. When she printed out the thing, there was another Smith and Schaefer invoice up in there, so. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna make an accountant out of you yet. So there are some, some things that definitely wanna change.
Smith and Schaefer invoices, if you look at them, they're pretty detailed, if you go back and look at them for this year.
Right.
So they, they would.
So we should be able to clarify the account.
You should be able to clarify that from the invoices, yeah, if you wanna take the time to do this.
Well, and, you know, I, in her defense, I'm gonna say, that, you know, Renee has limited time to really do. Much analysis of anything, right, so when we're, when we're looking at some of that stuff, and you don't get a lot of space to even provide a. Description, um, so, so when, you know, if your description is the invoice account. Or invoice number, that doesn't tell you anything, but. But it's a matter of, again, this filing system, that everything is put up in that back room, when it's, and we've talked about keeping the current year. And maybe the past year accessible downstairs, so we don't have to keep doing that, and, um, so we're making some changes.
Yeah, that's, that'd be a good idea.
And at some point, it'll be all electronic, right?
And your legal fees, I'm just gonna tell you, I, um. And some of you may have heard me say this before, but in my job, you have to continually watch your planners, your engineers. And your attorneys, because. Those are the ones that will, they're on a fee basis, right? So. It's great that, um, your engineer will charge you a flat, uh, fifty bucks for a council meeting. Your attorney, attorney is not doing that, so if you have a three-hour. Council meeting, it's, you're paid for three hours.
And.
So to the extent that I can limit, he doesn't need to be here and sit through it.
If there's something on the agenda that is, he's needed for, then he shouldn't be coming, otherwise, no.
So when you take away the interim part of my title, then I will.
I think there was a request at some point during all the transition, when we first started, do you remember that?
He was on when I started.
He, he was, but, but what, something happened, and I can't remember what it was, but. It was a request that was made by us to have him at every meeting. Because there had been some, just things that maybe weren't getting done well, or, or. Where people thought we weren't doing them, so it just was almost like an, a, extra set of, a bit of security, do you remember that?
Kind of an insurance policy.
Yeah.
I vaguely remember there was some.
But now with her, I think. What we didn't have was that experience, we didn't have the administrator or clerk with the, the experience, and so we relied heavily on his knowledge. But now, I think that's a hundred percent right, that we don't, we only need him for, um, specifics, specific things.
I think he was, he was here before us, but not long before.
We made the request, cuz we were getting so much brought to the table, that we couldn't answer. And it was putting people out another month or whatever, cuz she had to get to the attorney, but if we got a city administrator. She will be working with the problem if we got a problem, so she'll know, yes, we better have you at our meeting, or. You know, I mean, it will not say we have bad people in the office or anything, it's just. That you got a knowledge, and everything's gonna get back to square one, and, you know. Oh yeah, so next year, you know, if we're at that budget, and you say, I don't know what this is, you're in trouble.
Which leads me to a point too, that I wanna make sure I, I clarify with, with everyone in council, is historically, you've had. The other thing, why your legal costs are up is.
Right.
You've had multiple people contacting the, the attorney, so if he gets four emails about the same thing.
Every letter.
So, that's, I would like everything funneled through me, if, if you want a legal opinion on something. Let me know, so I'm the one contacting him, and we're, we're better able to manage those costs. Again, planners, engineers, attorneys. Thank you. Okay. So then, um, but that, yeah, you're right, when it comes time for the final budget. Um, in December. That may be one area where we're looking to come out. Okay, and here's the planning and zoning one. So you've got little on line eighty-eight. Thirty-four hundred dollars, and plus we bumped that, right, by. Cushion. And then staff salaries. That is coming again from that last spreadsheet, so that's covering the, the project specialist, it's gonna be in there. It's calling, including three of your public works people, two office staff. You wanna make sure all of those are being included, and then payroll taxes on the other, and then. At the planning and zoning meeting, uh. The commissioners had decided to ask council for forty thousand dollars. So that yellow box, I put the number down under miscellaneous, but it's really gonna be ultimately spread into those. Other categories. And part of the problem that we learned was where, um, the engineer and. Planning services, that we had a lot of, um, reversible expenses. Conversely, your fee schedule has flat fees, there are very few that allow for you to. To get a flat fee plus related legal and engineering or planning fees. So that's one of the things we're gonna look at with your fee schedule, adjusting that as well, but. That hasn't changed how they charge you, you know what I'm saying, so if, if we're charged a thousand dollars for their services. And he's thinking, well, you can recoup that from the person, but we could only collect two hundred and fifty dollars, that means. The city ate. Seven hundred and fifty dollars. So that part's problematic, but we're gonna fix that too.
I know what we were talking about, that of course I want to look at too, and, and maybe you were just trying to work on that as, as a reimbursable engineering cost at six hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Budget of twenty.
Well, that's some wastewater treatment.
Okay, so, but we just didn't put it in the budget.
Yeah, but because you really, at this point, you don't have the wastewater treatment facility set up in your charter accounts at all.
Okay, so it had to go someplace.
So it, it went someplace, and it went plenty of those.
But that's what PFA is. They're reimbursing us for those fees, that went so high.
So we're, we're fine on that one, okay.
It should be close to twenty thousand or zero.
Yeah, so that comes back out of the project, so the project is already considered that.
Well, and, and even if you go back to, you know, twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen, I mean, we're still looking at, you know, obviously less than the twenty thousand you budgeted, but in twenty twenty-two, but, you know.
So.
Not significant.
We're su- we're sure don't want those expenditures to throw our budget, tax levy's way out of whack, so we really need to identify that six hundred and fifty-one thousand, what is really true expenditures, that's not being kept by Wackensack. As we keep that in there, it's really going through our, budget off by six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which isn't reflective at all of what we're budgeting.
Well, how did it go in, in twenty twenty-one, cause you had three hundred and eighty-two thousand. And, and twenty twenty-one balance, and twenty twenty.
Well, I'm gonna say, I, correct me if I'm wrong here, but in twenty twenty-one, you were really doing all the foundational work to get the money for PFA and the analysis to be able to just move on to the project itself. When did you actually start the project? When did you?
Well, we've been injuring, the injury started and been ongoing, but we, we went up for business early twenty twenty-one, but, yeah. To me, this is very, very subjective, that three hundred and eighty-two thousand, because it's all reimbursable. Either it's injury fees, which is at seventeen seventeen master services account, but everything else reimbursable injury fees, in my mind, that should all go to zero, because that's all meant to be reimbursable for the PFA. So without looking at that twenty twenty-one, you know, you look at twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, I'm not sure how we have a hundred and twelve thousand negative there, but to me, these are all suspicious journal entries that weren't done, or maybe there is something there that is legit, but. And I, there's something strange, we can talk to Joe about that, to make sure my understanding is correct, but those reimbursable fees should be reimbursed from the PFA or or other services.
Oh, look at it. And the same, speaking of Joe, so that same caveat that I have about fielding calls for the attorney, I'd also like that to happen for the planner and the engineer as well.
Yeah, everything goes through.
Everything goes through you.
And some of those legal fees, per the description that was on the invoices, they went directly to be paid from Wackensack. Reimbursal from the PFA. And there may be some of these fees that will be reimbursed at the very end of the project too. I don't know, but there's, there's that possibility.
See, the one that really, oh, just strikes me as a little bit funny is line ninety-seven. In your planning and zoning department, you have a, a line item of planning and zoning. So I, I do think, you know, your, your charter accounts does need some work, but anyway.
I know that they were saying for the first year that they had in planning and zoning, so what Paul was saying, that they had money to spend, which is what they did for the, the first report that came back. But until then, they never had anything in their budget from, from what was that, so.
Well, it looks like, it looks like they had money in their budget, and there was money spent from their budget.
But it doesn't show up that way, cause actual is at zero off of that coming in. But if you go back to two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen, maybe that was with the five thousand dollars. Maybe that was part of those reports that were done.
Well, wasn't that time when the, um, future land use plan was starting to be put together?
So I.
No, I, I'm just talking of life.
I mean, there were five thousand.
So maybe that's what line ninety-seven is, is only the allocation to the planning and zoning committee?
Well, I, for some reason, Paul said that there's the first year they had money to be able to spend. And he was using Joe to, to do some work.
What, what year?
Just this year.
Yeah, and that, that was using, um, Joe's company for the resolutions.
Oh, that's our service. Line ninety-two.
That's different.
The planning services.
Yeah, that's different.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And again, this only goes through August, and remember, um, planners, engineers, and attorneys like to, you know, be like sixty days. And so your, um, your engineering did get cut up pretty, I think, I think I, we saw through July, so I think, you know, closer, we're, yeah, we're, we're getting but it does make a difference when you're looking at numbers. Want them to be as accurate and timely as we can.
This is messy. I love it.
Now trying to. So anyway, I, uh.
Just one quick comment, twenty twenty, actual, the forty-four thousand, that's when we did the future land use map and all the extra services from planning services, cause that's when the new map came out.
What, what?
In line ninety-three, for twenty twenty, for twenty twenty, the forty-four thousand, I'm guessing, probably twenty thousand of that was what we paid the planning services to come across the future land use maps. That's when it was adopted. Why it's so high this year.
You said forty-four thousand? Forty-four, yeah, okay, that's on off, it's ninety-three.
Adam gave us a lot of.
So this is my worry. With those big numbers in there, the, we talked about the six fifty-one, that, that's gonna make this budget look like it's exploding, right?
Well.
Terms of where we ended.
It may work itself out.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, is, can Joe answer that? To help us understand what.
Well, I think we need to.
Reimbursed, and if it was, where to go, or.
I think we need to look at that internally and see what was coded there and stuff, because Renee has, as, as, uh, the project moves along and, um, pay requests are submitted, which you guys all see at the, at the regular meetings and, and, uh, her. Um, she's also tracking, so she knows we, we have to make the payment, we have to get reimbursed, so they kind of go hand in hand. The problem is that they don't, the in and out don't always occur in the same, so on or.
They had to move that up, I think, for a couple weeks to be able to get it to, to jive, and so that.
Right, right, so.
With PFA, so.
Yeah, so with regard to, um, line one hundred, um, you can see last, twenty twenty-two's budget was sixty-nine thousand. And for twenty twenty-three, it's a hundred and fourteen, seven seventy-four. But remember, that's including sixty-six thousand plus, call it, call it seventy, um, in salaries that are, that are going to get coded, and again, that's all based on actual numbers. But, but it allows us to be able to, to show the auditors for Work Comp that they weren't always doing the highest rated work. We're spreading it out.
So, can we go back to the planning, no, I'm sorry, hold on, ninety-three?
Ninety-three. Engineering fees.
Is any of that reimbursable?
That's the master contract that Stantec has with the cities, so that's pretty much our projected item. But we also have security agreements where developers come in, like the Storage Place or the Thompson's Garage. We sign a security agreement to cover all of the engineering fees are taken out of the security agreement with the developer. So it's a separate line, it's a separate, it's not part of the master contract, I guess, so I'm saying.
Well, I'm just wondering why we're double, almost double in twenty twenty-two, you know what I mean, from our.
The sixty-eight thousand.
And that's what I mean, that none of that's accidentally.
Well, I, I, again, I think it's, I think it has to do with him doing work, thinking that we're gonna be able to, to recoup that cost from a client or.
Okay.
So.
But we have to just be a lot more careful about what we're asking about him, or how.
Yeah, what we were trying to do in planning and zoning is to turn around and have a fee for a company that's gonna have a certain fee per month. And with that fee per month, it's gonna include what's going on with the engineering costs, if I remember what we were.
The planning piece of it.
You know, so that it's, it's a lump fee per month, but it covers all of those engineering's per zoning, whatever might be going in there. So we're trying to make it where it's manageable, instead of being so out of whack on what's going on.
But how did we get so far, like I get twenty twenty because that was the future land use, that's about twenty, so how do we go from? That's what I'm asking, so that's what I'm asking, is some of this re- and by that, you mean it's reimbursable? That's what I'm wondering, is it some of this sixty-eight thousand dollars, we're gonna be reimbursed?
Well, either it needs a journal entry to put it in the right category.
Okay, that's what I, that's my question, because I just want to make sure that we're not triple, truly triple where we have been minus twenty twenty, and that possibly that might, some of that might be reimbursed yet.
Cause I think ninety-three and ninety-four is possible reimbursed, we just have to find out, right?
Yeah, right, we need to take a look.
Okay, thank you. I like all these covered at a different workshop line.
Ninety-nine, maybe I missed something, I thought it was forty-six thousand if you made your motion in P and Z.
Um, I thought it was, it was more than that, I think it was, I think it's actually my notes. What was that last date on that, you know?
Last P and Z.
And city tiles, so.
August. Yeah, well, something like that.
Would you save the eleven?
Yeah, that would be the second Thursday.
It was more than that, Ryan, you're right, I'm just trying to figure it out.
August eleventh.
What, did you think it was forty-six?
I thought it was forty-six thousand.
I thought so too.
It should be, it should be in the meeting notes, but.
Was that because to include the, the, um, visitor pay?
No, this was just for, we were looking, it wasn't possible for a monthly basis after that.
After the meeting, in the, in subsequent discussions, they were talking about, well, this is where, Joe came back and said, this is where, if you look at the planning services agreement, there's a line item in there that says, if developers come to you with certain questions, any type of planning and zoning confirmation should go back and build back to the company, other should go to the same budget. So that's why this forty-six is kind of a inflated figure because of that reimbursement in your fees that you mentioned about changing, for businesses that we pay that back, or we invoice the applicant. That discussion happened after the forty-six thousand, or the forty thousand.
I, I don't, I don't have it, and I thought I had written this down there in my P and Z book.
I'll check that, I'll check it, and.
Do they know we were looking at a monthly fee is what we were looking at, especially with.
It needs to be seven hundred, I'm not sure, I don't think it's forty thousand.
Because coming in this next year, we're gonna be rezoning so many things that there are, because we're going from twenty thousand square feet. So everything is gonna be coming through that, that whole thing, and so during that time, there's gonna be lots of fees that there are that are gonna be associated with that. And so that's what we were looking at.
You'd, you'd like to see that council, not you guys.
No, 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 what we did is, this is why it was here for, for this, okay? But that's the, those zonings are gonna have to come through the council, but there's still gonna be fees as you turn around and do the rezoning, takes money to be able to do it, so that was, that was a part of that, so. Do you have to have an engineer to do the rezoning? It's gonna be somebody has to. So when you do that, there's gonna be fees associated, but we were gonna do it on the monthly charge, instead of a quarterly charge, so that you can manage it, where are we?
Page three, on three. We are on the final page, and look at all of those things down, number one sixteen. Parks and Rec, so we covered everything else. Um, there you can see, again, the detail goes to, uh, these are the non-seasonal people that are spending time on Parks and Rec. Which includes, the non-seasonal people are gonna be your public works people, and your city administrator. Any questions on Parks and Rec?
Yeah, so you said Parks and Rec, this is for the non-seasonal permanent.
Correct.
Employees, okay.
And that's noted on line one seventeen, which is non-seasonal.
So you have zero right now, so it's just journal entry on where you're at for actual up-to-date.
Cause it's all gone into.
It's all new this year, we're doing it correctly.
Well, there.
They all went together before, okay, but now we have the fifty-one thousand.
Yep, in line one twenty-six, the budget is fifty-one six for your general maintenance grounds and.
You got a hundred and six.
Hundred and six through August. So that's the that's the Work Comp dumping ground for public works when you don't item. So those are pretty straightforward, mostly, remember, we covered a lot of the stuff at the last workshop, except for these personnel matters. And then the seasonal, we talked a little bit about, we don't need line items for each seasonal employee. So we're gonna combine those. And again, if I'll double check with with Kane and and determine what if we need that order. Yeah. So that number eight comes down as well.
So what's the total, if you don't see the screen, the four thirty? We talked earlier, it was four thirty-one, six thirty-nine, but not quite right either, I guess. It doesn't have your salary in the post. So we have salaries, and then we have everything we talked about, line one through one ten. So what is that sum total? That we can get an idea of what our expenditures are as of today, what we discussed last week and this week.
Oh, I don't think it's that.
You don't have it?
I don't have that.
Okay. If last week's was like one point three or something like that?
Twenty gazillion thirty-four before the adjustments.
And it's six fifty-two, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Including items.
The six fifty-two was just was only, oh, here, yeah, line three, three sixteen and three seventeen, total, including the CIP item, totally a million, two fifty-eight.
Million, two fifty-eight, oh, seventy-three.
The non-CIP items were six oh five five. So do you have on lines?
I'd written the.
Three sixteen.
I had six hundred and eighty thousand. I had six oh five scratched out and six eighty decided.
Or do you change the order? It's not good. Yeah, those are all with the adjustments for electricity and.
People are gonna ask field coding.
Okay. Then so there we go, and then I was just making sure that that's calculations reconciled with regard to the salaries. And they do.
One thing that I forgot to mention, and that we had talked about at a council meeting, that this group had brought to us, was adding a item, light item for age-friendly, small local area.
Was it? Age-friendly.
It was only two hundred and fifty, but I think that's incredibly low.
I think we should make it like five hundred or, you know, it's.
Right, it's so such a small amount.
Yeah.
Mostly for printing and, you know, any sort of information and. But I don't know where that would fit.
Well, and I'm I'm just looking too, I'm wondering if that's immunity center or.
Did we?
Was it on the one we did before?
No, we just, it's totally slipped my mind to to remind you last time, and then I forgot to do it again.
And then the mayor reminded me that we need to also where is that? The EDA and CETA.
Oh, yeah.
Got to put those in there, those are probably gonna, and then also what was the thing you got to include in this budget? Now, next year, we need to pay twice.
Oh, the payback to the loan?
Yeah.
That's an internal twenty-three thousand. That's an internal transfer.
For the.
Payback, the general fund from the Wackensack and from the water utility.
I was thinking of what's on the counter and this is what you were talking about here, but I was talking about here's what I'm talking about. The park transfer schedule and dam removal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, except now for twenty twenty thirty, we need budget seventeen two, so. Yeah, so those, so we have some little adjustments tweaks to make and.
Do we got that in for age-friendly?
I made a note.
And then the CETA, so we got those too.
Nope. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for putting this all together again. We would be swimming. More than we are.
Well, the line number is.
Yes, we are.
We're going that way.
Very good.
Now, we'll wait for a sticker shot after the next.
Well.
We're getting to work then.
And that's why I'm just gonna say, from a a planning standpoint, you are far better off doing incremental raises rather than staying flat and then just moving, because we have a big project or something. My philosophy, if the council, I'll just implement what you want to do, but.
Because then you can budget them better.
Yeah. By Dana?
Thank you.
She already did, you want a second? Thank you, Carol. All in favor?
All right.
These two, I think. You need to almost make them.
Purple.
Okay.